Everybody, not that in the middle. The one up there, I'm trying to get the school board in the middle with everybody on it. Yeah, that's got both with the same right in the middle.
My god.
Okay, no, no issues.
I thought it had like a 360. The camera.
So this is. We'll be in the bar at the middle.
But now it's point, there you are. No, okay, those of you that have thin long faces, you don't have to worry about it. But those of us. Goys there. Oh, my god, hideous, hideous, hideous. I might wear something. Covid mask. I could, that would be even better.
Yeah, I got it out late, so it's your comment.
Oh, right.
They changed it, nobody told me.
See, that's what keeps happening today, that nobody tells us. Yeah.
A lot of times, we're discussing.
I might have found the. Somebody writing on a.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Yeah.
So.
That was a good decision. Going to replace them or going to rest them?
The future startup is so happy.
And the bullfrogs too.
Good thing they didn't turn on. One has a warning.
Exactly.
Yes.
Go for it. Take some.
You know, it was.
They try her. Absolutely. Absolutely, I remember. I'm from Delaware and one time they. The stunt was Delaware is closed and they had cops set up and he stopped it. I mean, this was in like probably around 1970. And then and people said, but I could go to the state, no, it's closed today. Only there are people I certainly. Absolutely.
Sure it is.
And his, you know, his arms are now he bumps against something.
All right, it's six o'clock, we'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Welcome, everybody. Brandon's working on some technical issues for us. We will do some adjustments to the agenda when we get to the action items, we'll deal with the the school bond issue first. And Suzie has a surprise after her financial third quarterly report that she will share. So does anybody have any declarations of conflicts? No, minutes of the last meeting, I apologize, I didn't read them and review all the transcripts from the public hearing and the meeting until this afternoon. So I, I don't know if people got a chance to review that, I saw Tammy did.
And then see, you said you just had some, you sent me some, right?
I sent one.
Okay.
I just had one very minor, could be fixed.
Only a few minutes ago.
Oh, okay, got it.
So did people have any other comments, are we ready to approve, we'll do them separately, the public hearing minutes.
Move we approve with any corrections as needed.
Discussion, all in favor, five, and the minutes of the last meeting. Anybody have any other changes or concerns besides what we sent to Judy?
I move we accept.
All in favor, five, thank you. Did anybody have any communications from the public that we should share?
I just received an email from a resident down here at Ripley Creek, and I think Brandon has received the same thing.
Yeah, I have not read it yet, I think it came in.
It's about the smell again?
No, it's related to the junkyard and the big mess down there.
He had until April 15th to remove the junk. And so after that, Terry was going to sort of send a letter of violation. And so we are at that point now, we are still in progress. But it has, you know, a timeline that is attached to it that is probably not as expedient as some residents are hoping for.
So I assume Lorraine will be updated on what's going on. Are the resident down there will be updated?
I will reply to her, her email if she reached out to me, yes, I'm not necessarily proactively calling neighbors to update them on the progress.
You'll respond to her.
Yes, absolutely.
And just for background, for anybody who isn't aware, the property owner realized they were not going to be qualifying for a junkyard permit. And decided they weren't going to try and have a junkyard anywhere else, so they've been told they have to move the junk, so that's what we're talking about. So the warrant for expenditures, Irene sent that Thursday, did, and I saw some questions that she answered. Does anybody have any other questions? No, all right, then we can sign that. Did anybody present or on Zoom have any public comments to make that do not relate to an agenda item? Yes.
Yeah, Rodney Brack, I live on Drifting Road. Now that the season's starting, the people are already starting to park on the road. And the signs, as you say, no parking on the pavement, or if it will be towed at owner's expense, those haven't been replaced since the terrible storm there a couple of years back now. And I was just wondering if there was going to be anything done about that? Or is it something that when that starts happening, if we as citizens are just probably local tow company and having them towed, like how does that get addressed?
Brandon?
Well, historically, there is not a great precedent for how it's addressed, we put the signs up, people still park on the pavement, they don't get towed, so they continue to do so. There have been suggestions to expand the parking lot, we have room to do so, but the parking lot is not being totally utilized, so this is not an overflow situation. So.
What about the sign, putting the signs back up? Brandon asked about that.
Yeah, and I think that if we have a plan for enforcement, then I wouldn't hesitate to put the signs back up, but.
But we have a lot of other places where we're hoping for the honor system, it's better than nothing, we have signs.
Sure, I mean, we have a proven track record of it being ineffective. And in expense that comes along with ordering these signs, and so that's sort of my hesitation there.
Well, what do other people think?
So can a landowner call and have something towed if it's on or near their property, like if they pull off the side of road onto somebody's lawn or.
It has to be.
The roadway so somebody can't get in and out of the driveway.
If somebody was parked on Rodney's lawn, then yes, obviously he could have it.
As long as he's out of, as long as the car is out of the right of way, it's got to be out of the road right away. I mean, and if impedes access, yes, but not if somebody's sort of on the edge.
That's what, that's what I'm saying, that's, yeah, there's the road, there's our right of way, and then would come Rodney's lawn or anybody's lawn down there, so.
Well, and we've also had a conversation about emergency vehicles and, you know, making sure that they could get through, but.
So it would, it would be on us because it's within the town's right of way where the parking is happening, to, to call, to have these vehicles towed. If you all would like us to take that approach this summer, as an attempt to direct people to the parking lot, then I'm happy to do so and then explore.
Well, I think before we were going to do that, we would definitely need to have signs, we would need to let people know it's going to be enforced for a change.
Yeah.
And have a policy, so I guess the question is whether the select board wants to take that up, not tonight, but have that get on our agenda as something we want to think about.
Sounds a little drastic to me.
Have you ever tried having somebody either from the ambulance or the fire departments come down and just talk to people or give out a piece of paper? I know it sounds maybe lame, but especially for emergency vehicles, they could not get through there. So what if someone's house was on fire, maybe you don't think about that when you're laying on the beach.
Well, Mike Smith is confident he would get through regardless of whatever.
They would tow them, yeah, they would tow them, yeah, I understand.
Push them up.
Push them off, okay, all right, okay.
But I, I sort of like your idea of a piece of paper.
Or somebody comes down.
Under the windshield wiper.
In a uniform and says, hey, maybe you don't know that this is impacting your neighbors, but here's what this could mean.
To me, it, it seems like, I mean, we don't have a designated person for that, right, so we can find someone.
We can get you a uniform.
Or our, you know, our, our board secretary lives close by, so.
True. Yeah, I guess in terms of, you know, yes, we're obviously very concerned about.
Right, and I'd be willing to buy, you know, like four signs, because I think like two of them washed out in the storm. There's another one in our other neighbor, you know, literally says, no parking on the pavement, and they literally parked right next to the sign on the pavement, impeding his little crosswalk. So then last year, we did put up some signs that we did buy, you know, no parking, and, you know, he even asked us, oh, Jesus, if you had more, could you put one down near here too? Because just so people don't, shouldn't care.
Well, how about if we have. Rodney, how about if you and Brandon work on some sign proposals and bring this back?
Okay, like I say, I'd be willing to buy the exact same sign that's down there, and then just that Steve Jarrett guy could hang them and post them or whatever, and that way. Now, because now with the one lane road, it's almost like people think, oh, there's a great parking space by these barriers now.
Well, and I'm thinking about Wendy's point, that signs that say different words, you know, like emergency vehicles need to pass, please respect the parking rules or whatever, you know. If you could come up with, no, you don't want to do it. What do you think, Brandon, what do you think? We, we can read your face now, what do you think?
I think that we either keep doing nothing like we've always had, always have, or we enforce the signs in the way that they are stated, and that they'll be towed if you park on pavement.
Well.
Yes.
A middle ground is worth trying for the summer.
No, I.
And see how it goes.
I understand, I, what I, my expectation is that a middle ground will be increased effort without the increased results.
And what's the timing on it not being one lane anymore?
That's a great question.
We don't.
Not, not this summer.
Okay, so all the more reason we need to be trying to do something, I think, well, it's one lane, it's even more dangerous.
Could put some orange cones out there.
But they, people move them, right, I mean, I've seen that before. They'll blow over, they're not. They throw them.
Like, they're tacky, you know.
They don't look great.
Does anybody know anybody that has a tow truck and just wants to ride them and make some extra money?
With like to the point.
Yeah, my, you know, I would put a call into Auto Master, they do a lot of work with the town, I guess, they.
Would they do it like per tow, or would they make a sign of contract for the summer or? Well, don't people have to pay to get their car back?
If we had a contract, it would mean that we wouldn't have, there's ways, we wouldn't ever be paying for the tow, they would pay.
The owner, if they want their car back, okay.
There are other times, though, like without that, where you do have to pay if you make the call to have a vehicle towed. But this is another thing to consider because of the, you know, we have Parklight Landing opening up, that will have signage around parking and towing that should be enforced because it's brand new. And so I think that there is an opportunity.
Or towing policy.
And enforcement, you know, and keeping people in designated lots, it's not like there are not, this lot is empty the majority of the time, that there are people parked inside the road, so.
It's not that far away from the road either.
It's like 500 feet, we measured it the other day, from the parking lot to the entrance to the beach.
All right, well, that, that was a good discussion, and I'll look forward to hearing proposals from you, Brandon. So moving on to our action items, let's talk about the school revolving renovation fund issue, you want to give us some updates?
So moving them up the agenda?
Yes, you were busy when I announced that.
Long story somewhat short, is that this is the, the fund for the HVAC system. If you will remember, it has a certain amount forgiven, has a certain interest free, you know, a very financially responsible approach to this project. So it adds support from the select board, the budget committee, the school board unanimously. We found out that the bond would not be awarded if our 2022 audit was not done. In order to get the audit done, we need our financial statements prepared from Ron Boulier, our CPA, who's contracted to do so. He essentially did not have us on our, on his regular schedule, because, well, because he had us there for two years, and we weren't getting him an audit, a school audit from Fred, so that he could begin this work. So we got him the audit in late January, and he's been chipping away at our financial statements whenever there's an opening in his schedule. I was under the impression that he was working on it more regularly, as he had requested documents, we paid bills for him, you know, we'd been in communication with him. And so I had assumed that we were getting closer every week, and that was an incorrect assumption. So now, he says he cannot finish the financial statements by May 15th deadline in order to receive this.
Well, he'd have to finish his part, and then it would have to go to Fred for an audit.
Right, but he can't even finish his by that date, so I spoke with Fred a couple of times today, he is going to begin work on our financial statements. Now, ideally, you have a separate auditor than the person who prepares your financial statements. Historically, we never have, right, it has done both for us, there's precedent there, but best practice would be, one party puts together the financial statements, another party audits them. Which is what Rick had set up, and then we've never made any progress on. And so Fred is optimistic that he can do both the financial statements and the audit in time for this deadline, and so we will be working with him on that. It will mean that we're paying more money to have our financial statements prepared because we're having two people do it now, you know, Ron is maybe halfway through the work. Fred says that it's about 40 hours worth of work. So anyway, at this point, I'll be working closely with Irene and Fred to make sure that he has everything and that the process keeps moving quickly and that there are no delays on our end between now and May 15th. Anything you all wanted to?
No, I really appreciate you getting right on top of it, Brandon and Jane, both of you, and you don't need anything from the school, am I correct?
Correct.
I really appreciate it because this would be tragic for both of us.
For all of us, for everybody in town.
Because none of us had any way of knowing that was going to happen.
Right.
But yeah, we found a solution in the, in a really difficult situation that at least has some light at the end of the tunnel.
Why we pay him the big bucks.
So I, I had some concern about taking the CPA, the independent CPA out of the process and not knowing very little about audits. I did talk to a CPA today about that and looked at the, the federal government's auditing standards for municipalities. And was told essentially that if Fred, having a fiduciary duty to the town, signs that he's following those government auditing standards. And that the state auditor will accept it this way, then we should be entitled to rely on that. So as long as Fred makes those, confirms that for us, then I think we should be okay. But we do all need to work, there's a lot of, you know, Brandon, Rick, the budget committee, the select board, you know, Mike, a lot of people have tried to get, look for different auditors. You know, what are our options, and this is a statewide problem, the Bangor Daily News had an article in the last few months about how many municipalities are in this situation. If you go on the state auditor website and look at the municipalities audits, most of them are behind like ours is. And even the MMA magazine had an article in the last few months about a guy who this was his second career, and it's so wonderful, please decide to become a municipal auditor. So I don't know, you know, what the long-term solution is going to be, but we need, we'll work on that once we get through this hurdle.
I'm hoping that we can resolve this in time, and then knowing what we've gone through this time, we'll, we'll all kind of start over.
Right.
Best practice is what can we go, going, knowing that we're still working on the 23 audit now, which is horrible enough, but if we all start it, how can we do the best we can? Because it's hard to do a budget when we don't really know about our money, is it true?
Right.
It's not just municipalities, every school in the whole state is in the same situation.
My understanding is when Mike spoke with Fred in the last week was though that he needed to get the 23 audit fast-tracked afterwards, so that would at least get us at least.
In cycle.
Closer.
Closer than we really kind of have been, because Fred understood the urgency when it was laid out, it's about a million dollars that would be lost if we can't get this done. Yeah, the 30% forgivable is 580, and if we have to pay interest at 4%, it's over $400,000.
So I don't know if we need a liaison like you proposed before, I don't. I don't, but something, we need to have established some kind of communication so we all know where we are, I know Mike and Cassie before had constant communication with Fred, where are we with the audit? And sometimes we wouldn't get to talk to him like you did, Brandon, he just wouldn't be available for us.
Yeah.
It was hard to get home.
I mean, I don't feel like having a liaison from the select board to the school board is, makes that much sense, because so much of what the school board does is completely.
Yeah, we don't always interlink, but this kind of audit stuff.
I think things that are big-ticket financial items or capital improvements because the town owns the property, anything that's going to involve, you know, if we're, we can't all go to the taxpayers the same year and say we made an extra million bucks from you guys. So I think if the superintendent and the town manager are talking, you know, monthly or every other month about where are we, is there anything in?
But there's also a business manager and a finance director that.
Maybe.
Need to talk, and that process could have been tightened up a lot, you know, and saved us three months, and so, you know, I think there's improvements on both of those.
There always can be improvements, right, no matter how good we think we're doing, because.
Right.
We weren't getting the straight information from our.
Yeah, I mean, I think it was hard for everybody that you didn't know the town was going to be the borrower, the town wasn't happy to learn you're the borrower.
To us till the last minute, and we didn't know we were so far behind, we, and Fred did know that.
Well, no, I think more than the issue was that like we're done, and nobody's calling each other to say that we were done in October.
We just.
And then Mike was checking in and getting updates, thought that the CPA was almost like, we're, oh, yeah, any day, like thinking that was going to Fred soon, and then there's just.
Well, and the town had no reason to believe that we needed to be borrowing money, if we had known we needed.
Well, not all of us want an audit done, though, right?
Right, definitely, but you know, if we had known whenever somebody at the school started talking to the main.
I don't think even if we were the lead borrower, because our audits are interconnected, it would be, it would be the sole, sole, same business.
I'm kind of surprised the people at the state didn't ask about this at the beginning, because they know how many municipalities are in this boat, you know, but anyway, we are, it's good, we are all on the same team.
Brandon has made this much.
Yeah, let's just have Brandon keep us informed of where things are, so thank you, Brandon.
And, you know, a new superintendent will be a new relationship, and the two finance people, you can, you know.
And I don't think Mike's been one that doesn't communicate.
Oh, no, I'm not saying, I'm not saying that.
We, we talk, you know, he asks for an update on the audit every couple of weeks.
Yeah. I don't think you'd want to hear from the chief of debt more often.
So fingers crossed and keep us posted, yeah, so thank you. So Suzie, the quarterly financial report.
Went through with questions to Irene and then questions with Brandon today. And everything is very much on track, there are a couple of things that we'll probably run over, but Brandon has got a plan. So I, we can go through it department by department, or we can say things are good.
Do people have a need to go through?
I like the things you could.
All right. I'm up for that, well, thank you very much for that favorable report.
Yep.
And before we move on from Budget Matters, if it is possible that is, tonight is Scott's last appearance, we want to say thank you for all your years of service to the.
He may be back.
Thank you.
He's going to be moving to Scarborough.
Moving, wow, we're going to lose him.
And tell Ginny will miss her too.
Thank you.
So then Suzie, you have another announcement.
With my resilience hat on, and this is kind of, the, the public announcement has not yet been made.
This is public.
Well, right, but. The South Thompson Select Board knows, I wanted you guys.
Thank you.
We, we were successful with our grant proposal for a climate action planner, and so we will be hiring Meg and, and going to work. And that we have, they'll be, I'll be coming to you shortly, maybe, you're meeting again like next week, right?
Well, Monday is a workshop just about a comprehensive.
Okay, three weeks, great, with, we're going to do a memorandum of understanding, so, because St. George will be the, the money's going to flow through St. George's books. Now, we did also hear that there's an additional $5,000 we can apply for to pay for Irene's time or any other costs that the town of St. George might have in administering. to pay for Irene's time or any other costs that the town of St. George might have in administering the grant. So I would talk to you and just see what, what we need to do for that and if you feel, and when I talked to Irene about this before, she kind of felt like it's gonna take an hour, you know.
I disagree. Grants always take much more than an hour, even when they're presented as simple.
So absolutely.
I would like to pursue it.
Yeah, excellent. So we will talk. And um, and Neil from South Thomiston and I are gonna be working on the MOU and there's another document we have to write then. But we're gonna be back to you guys.
Yeah, I, I must say as a Select Board member, I'd go after every five thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you so much.
Successful grant.
Thank you.
And yeah, three successful grants.
You guys are on a roll. Wow. And Suzie and Meg and I are meeting on Monday to talk about the possibility of using some Colby students to help with the climate action plan, you know.
Like we had them do with the comp.
Yeah, we've had three total work with, on the comp plan. In fact, two of those three are gonna be here on Monday for our workshop. They're coming from Waterville. Um, so that would be, I'm sure there'd be students interested in working on a climate.
So yeah, I just wanna, I want Meg to have a chance to think about what she, how her work might progress and how she might use that.
Yeah, and we can tell you how they've worked on the comp plan. So that's all good. So Brandon, if you can bring up the Port Clyde Landing Park schematic, Dale can talk to us about that. This is very exciting for people who haven't been following this. You know, the landing's almost done in, in Port Clyde, it'll be paved soon. And that lot, it's just to the north and up a hill from the landing um was set aside to be green space. Um, and so there's been a little subcommittee that um Ann Cox, Dale, Dave Shemanska is the representative from the Harvard Committee and I um have worked on and we've met with the neighbors. Um, and so this is, is this your work or Ann's work?
Ann's work is the artist.
Can you make it bigger?
So Ann and I have been met on the site, I think, three times in total.
That's not exactly what you wanted to happen.
And if we're all familiar, the uh area to be paved is down on the bottom of the screen towards the.
Towards the parking.
And um the L-shaped building in the corner is right, I can't remember the family name. But um it's right where the, just past that would be the boat launch ramp is, and then the house up above on the left. Again, I don't remember their names, I apologize.
It's the old Zwecker House, everybody refers to it.
And so um our goal was to have a semi-flat area for use of whether it's picnic, sitting, watching the sunset, whatever. Um, maybe a couple of tables and then trying to accommodate um the concepts of separation um from the house, top um from the slope down along the rim and on the ramp going up to the rise. So those are areas that we highlighted as um we felt critical. Or at least we prioritized and Jane indicated she thought that uh we gave the option of, Ann and I run into this in our lives all the time where people phase things in because they're not able to comprehend, they're not able to pay, that they're unsure. Um, being, Jane said she thought, based on the numbers we were talking about that we should try and do it all at once. Um, and it, it's not a big number in, from standpoint of the project, certainly, and um trying to appease everybody. Often it'd be best to try and get it done in one space. Plant list is uh, I brought it with me, is all native.
Nice.
With some variations or varieties, some people call them native ours, but that doesn't matter to you. And um highlighting the uh area of the base there, where the ramp is. Um, designating that to be the most thickly and a couple of medium-sized trees going there, proposed, if we can find holes make it happen, we're a little edgy right there. Um, and uh I believe Brandon slash Jane has contacted uh the um Alec as excavator, talking about trying to get started in a week or ten days or two weeks or two months.
They've already started. They've been working on.
Did they?
Uh, shoring up the, the wall.
Okay, I, I started excavating, but there was too much going on for me to.
Yeah, they've been working on the front of the wall as well as clearing, uh, cleaning out some of the stuff out back to down trees and.
I'll take a peek then.
Yeah, you should check it out.
All right. And so we are proposing um to Ontario get there when we have an advance time and so that we can um solicit volunteers to help plant it. Keep our costs down and get people involved, always a good idea. The more likelihood that we have some um people involved, the less likelihood of vandalism or not caring or whatever. Um, it's not an outrageous plan at all, but uh accomplished what we thought was the most important things. Sunflower material.
Lennon Jocelyn from uh over on Clark Island Road, on the uh Wildlife Refuge.
Bill Foray.
Yeah, offered to donate any granite that's needed.
Oh, great, great.
Wonderful, wonderful. That was one of my concerns.
And some of you may remember, if you can move toward the top of the screen. Um, the family that don't, that sold land to the town still owns four hundred and forty square feet of the property that um they want reserved for parking. They have a house on one of the islands. And because we were not permitted to use federal tax dollars on private property, which they still own. It wasn't possible for their two parking spots to be on the paved landing area, which would in many ways have been more logical. Um, so we're having to carve out a space. There was a, a construction trailer basically in that spot. And that was one of the things we discussed with the Zwecker family um heirs. You know, that a few weeks of summer, that family's gonna have cars there, but we're not gonna pave, it'll still be grass. They can park there and there will be signs at the entrance that only authorized vehicles can go up there, cause Steve Jarrett will go up and mow the grass. Empty the garbage. Um, and those folks will park up there. But nobody else is supposed to be driving up there. Um, and as you can see, there's a porta potty down below. Um, and a dumpster down below. Um.
It's not actually where the dumpster.
I know, it's not. Well, it probably just, oh, the Harvard Committee met on the site last week and we looked at all the stuff down there, but they haven't really been involved in the green space. So all of that will be happening in May, really. So if you know anybody who's interested in helping Dale with the planting and helping save tax dollars. Send those people to Dale.
Um, it, it's important as soon as we can to uh, you know, sit a date. But I know that's all built around.
Calik.
Yeah.
So is he, is Jim Calik gonna talk to Dale? Are you gonna be the middle man or what?
Um, I will, right now, uh, Jim is waiting for first week of May. He essentially just said he can't get good dry loam right now. Um, and so first week of May, he's planning on uh
Does he know that Dale wants to be there?
Right.
They run into this all the time where they seed everything.
So Dale had said he would like to be there when.
And if you and I want to catch up with him sometime, if you then I don't have to chase you. If we develop, and I don't know him, I just know his name. And so if we can get by that, I'm pretty glad I've dealt with contractors my whole life.
If you send me an email, I'll set up a meeting.
That would be great. Did you say me send you?
That'd be great, thank you.
Do any people have any questions about this? I think it's gonna be really nice and a lovely, it's a beautiful view from there.
And it's all part of the grant.
Yes, yeah. Well, the grant money's spent, but we borrow, the, the money we borrowed, um, there's still money there from which this um.
And, and one thing to keep in mind, I try not to be a pessimist about this, and I haven't brought it up before, but I will. Um, we can do volunteers, me and whoever, you can do a great job when we do the inside. It won't mean anything if there isn't maintenance. Nothing. So if you decide that, no, we're not gonna really maintain that. Put the money in your pocket, spend it somewhere else. All right?
Well, tell us what kind of maintenance you think it's gonna need.
There isn't a single person in this room that doesn't really know that. It's whether they decide, if, I can't imagine there's someone here that hasn't planted something. You turn around and walk away, you're gonna win, you got.
But, so you're just talking about pruning and.
The pruning is such a small part of it. I'll prune it for nothing till I'm dead, you know, it would take me half an hour, an hour and a half a year. But, you know, watering, picking up garbage, weeding, certain, just the.
Like the cemeteries have groups that go one up.
Well, one, one thing that arose out of these conversations was that it would be really nice if there were a garden club in town again. I know Diane Olberger used to um you know, seed plantings out in front here and other places. And so this is an opportunity, I think, for us to get the word out. Um, that if somebody wanted to start a community garden club that could help maintain this. I mean, we do have a place where there's the hose is gonna be from down below. Um, but right, somebody needs to be in charge. And this is another thing that is part of the comp plan discussion that we have a one-man public works department, which is a little understaffed for the town to have only one person.
Technically, we don't have a public works department.
Well, I realize that. We have Steve.
The library seems to be great, getting people together with interest, so maybe they could get some interest going in it.
Good point.
I think you'd be more um successful if you could get Port Clyde.
Port Clyde residents, that's.
People would see it every day.
Well, and I, you know.
We have.
We can think about who some of those people are.
People down there, we just have to get one to.
Right.
Somebody who wants to be the.
Yeah.
Spearhead. Things like ice cream and some of that, whatever, direct.
Right, all right, well, I'll um.
We're adding Port Clyde kayaks, put a kayak rack up on the site, so maybe it would be interesting.
Oh, yeah. Okay. And thank you for that, Dale and Ann and everybody who's worked on it and where. It's gonna be fun, it's gonna be pretty. Um, yes, speaking of canoe and kayak racks.
Oh, yeah.
Here's your big chance to tell us more.
That way. Um, I reached out to Bill Kelly to ask about what our liability would be if we um per your request, what our liability would be if we had canoes um open for the public to use that were not locked up. And essentially, he said that it shouldn't be much of a problem. There is some signage that we should put up around, you know, with some guidelines to consider. Uh, and that uh we can get some of that from MMA, cause they are, are insured. Um, but then otherwise it is. Uh, it did not raise much of a concern for him.
Well, I felt a lot better after Steve told me, I didn't know this, that the marsh is really shallow. I didn't realize that you could just stand in there. So that, that makes me worried.
There are definitely spots.
It all depends on how high you were.
I think the biggest issue that I had just cursory involvement in this because Stu Rich came and pitched the Conservation Commission about the concept and you know, you've got a young man who um expressed an interest and you've got a system and you got a result and then they hit a roadblock which I wished that hadn't happened, but they, they got a plan. And this just seems like a win, 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 win. You know, it's good idea for the community, a young man who grew up in the community and has come up with an idea, you got people volunteering, I just think it's a win, 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 win. So I've said when I first heard it, just call me. You know, um, so I'm glad that we can, would be good pushed by the, what seems the only significant one is the.
So what are people on the Select Board thinking about? When are we moving ahead with this?
Parks and Rec would like to proceed. There was quite a bit of discussion at the meeting.
At their meeting.
But, but basically, let's, let's give it a try.
I just keep thinking about it as a mother, I guess. It's so close to the school and the library. And just having canoes sitting down, I can just see a bunch of kids just going down there.
That's the goal.
I know, but.
I know, but somebody can drown in eighteen acres of water. I mean, I.
Kids don't get involved with stuff anymore and watch what the kids.
Well, Parks and Rec actually have life jackets, wouldn't they?
Yeah.
I, but.
But see, that's part of the question. What was discussed at the public hearing was
Kids don't think about.
Was not providing life jackets and paddles.
No.
No. All right, well then tell them.
So, sorry, yeah. Yeah, one of you suggested that.
I said that I thought we should be providing stuff, like checking it out, some of these signs, I'm gonna have the canoe back at eight o'clock. And Ashley gives them a key to the canoe and the stuff and they sign a waiver, even if it's meaningless.
To me, that is way risky, because now you need it, because the canoe is still gonna be there, right?
Right.
And so we're giving a boat with now no paddle or life jacket, that sounds much more dangerous.
You know, I was saying you give them the life jacket and the paddles. I think I said have it here, though.
That's what Ben was saying too, have it here, so they come get it. But the, the boats are there. If a couple twelve-year-olds wanna go out onto the marsh into the boats, but they don't have a paddle because they didn't set it up with Ashley and they don't have a life jacket because they're not down there. Then they're gonna use a couple sticks. Or if we just put it out there and.
They're gonna do it.
If, if these boats are free to use.
Bring your own paddle.
You must use the life jacket. No, paddles can be stored there too.
Okay, he's saying have all the equipment there.
Yeah, some people want for success, yes.
And, and if the stuff disappears, then we just say, oh, well.
Yeah, that's on Parks and Rec, that they are willing to take on Ashley and that committee is willing to take on the management of the gear, so um soliciting donations, uh, you know, fishing out some canoe, uh, replacing damaged paddles, whatever it may be.
All right, so um I guess we're gonna vote on whether we go ahead with this particular proposal from Parks and Rec. That they will put the stuff out there, it'll be unlocked.
With signage following advice of our attorney.
Let's wait till we have the formal.
Okay, so you want them to bring their proposal.
I think they should bring, you know, hey, we're ready to go with it, this is how we plan to do it.
What's missing? The sign? That's what you need?
Yeah, probably, I don't know. I just, you know, I.
I just wanna make sure I'm clear in what I asked them.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Um, let us, yeah. Because, because I don't think it was finally resolved, all the ways it could proceed, other than we'd sort of like to proceed. But, okay, a little more detail.
So if you have Ashley, um, or you tell us what she precisely proposes.
That's what I just did.
Okay, so your plan would be just to have canoes there.
I, I don't know that that was, I didn't, I didn't get the impression that that was finalized.
That, that was the plan, assuming Bill Kelly signed off on it.
Ah, okay.
Bill Kelly signed off on it, assuming signage would go up.
Then I'm, then I'm all right.
I, I actually think we should just let them go ahead and try it.
I, I agree, I agree there.
Are we gonna paint on the canoes town of St. George? So if we see him, you know, somewhere else, let him know where they belong.
He'd like to.
Yeah.
I think that would be.
That's what the rental companies do. I own a rental one that, you know, we got bought at the end of the season.
Yeah, there was Steve's in the.
All right, so Brandon doesn't want any further discussion. We're voting on the proposal that he has just laid out. So does somebody wanna make a motion?
I make the motion. I'll second it.
Any other discussion? You've had probably enough discussion. All in favor? All opposed?
I wish them well, but I'm not.
Well, that's how I feel. I mean, if somebody drowns, I will feel awful. Oh, me too, if somebody.
And I have people using watercraft at my house and I watch them like a hawk, cause everybody is always overly confident until they get in trouble. Yeah, so.
If you wanna communicate with the.
If you wanna communicate with the parents, like through the school, to like let parents know what's happening, that they can prepare. And maybe some education to the kids as a parent of between twelve year olds, like I would explain to them, we're not going down there unless we talk about it. And if you do, you know, like, so maybe we can help with some outreach for that too.
That would be great. And the library, since they're right there, we were hoping that they would be the ones checking things out, but they, they declined even though they checked out. Their chainsaw to me, which seems way more.
I know, but you're not twelve.
Yeah, but I'm not.
Twelve year old with a canoe over the chain.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yes, why not just kayaks, which I think are more stable?
You know, both, there's both, the idea of canoes, kayaks, yeah.
Yeah.
It'll probably be more.
Van up boards and whatever.
Probably more kayaks.
I know Jess McReeve was in favor of this plan.
Well, it's scary and we're, so we'll see how it goes this season and then we'll revisit it or we'll just stop immediately if there's a disaster.
Release from parents, like in any rec department, it could be released, that parent signed it at the beginning. And then, and your name was on the file.
Yeah.
You know, before you went and used it.
It, it won't be any release. It's similar to other recreation opportunities like a playground or a hiking trail that we have in town. They're there to use. There is, uh, inherent risk within.
I used to worry about my kids skating on the marsh. That was more my worry, that they drive skating on the marsh. Not the swimming or the kayaking or that, but we all have our things.
It's a fabulous place to skate.
It's a wonderful place for kids. I mean, we're very fortunate. We have it.
Yes.
For the kids to study and.
For adults, you know, all of this, I've been involved with, with my wife and as president of the library. But from my perspective, the piece that scared me the most was if a canoe wasn't back at the close of day. Whose responsibility is it to go looking for that? And that marsh goes about a mile further back than anybody can ever see.
Right.
Um, it goes almost all the way over Ponderosa Pond.
It does, yeah.
And there is no roadway, no paths or anything in, in about a mile stretch there. It's all literally marsh and alders.
Well, there's the WhatsApp roadway, so you can actually access, uh, the full length of the marsh pretty easily from the middle section.
Okay.
There's a, a footpath around some, some, some pointed areas. You can get ATVs down most of it from the Fogarty Corner and. And part of the way from the WhatsApp end.
But if somebody was out in there in trouble.
We're not, and we're not gonna know.
But what, what do we do if somebody falls down on a hiking trail and is out there after?
And if they're gonna go above the main body of the marsh, they gotta get out and lug it up, you know, haul it up.
It's not an easy portage.
No, you can do it, you know. You can, when you, if you skate, you gotta, you know, punching through the grass, broken ice to get up above.
All right, well, hoping for the best.
Business this risk, you know.
It really is.
I would think of what, you know, my brother and I did when we were little kids around here. We'd go out with a three horsepower outboard and go all around the islands and nobody knew when we'd be back or if we'd be back.
They just said be back by supper if you want, you're right.
Yeah, we would drag butts out of the woods that had holes in them. These are the speed.
Is it time for the town manager's report?
Yes, it is. All right, go ahead.
I don't have, uh, much to report on actually, because, well, I've been out a lot of this past week. Um, and so the, uh, big things that I've been working on, uh, we have already covered. The two other pieces I would say are, uh, working closely with the EDA to finally get that reimbursement from, uh, Colts storage spending.
And what are you expecting?
I have a call with her tomorrow. Uh, and so. I'm expecting it before the end, around the end of the month.
That's pretty soon.
Good night.
Good night. Thank you.
Thank you all you are.
Hi, Dale.
Take care.
We are still working on, uh, the Ripley Creek Junkyard, as I man, as I mentioned. Uh, that is in process and moving as I will, uh, to the new residents. And then, uh. Last is, uh, getting ready for, uh, some spring road repair and, uh, summer work. So we have our paving schedule, uh, and wanting to make sure that culverts that need to be addressed are being addressed now ahead of time. And, um, develop that so.
Can you tell us when we're gonna expect those, um. Electronic speed feedback signs from?
Yeah, so they were never ordered. Tara was working on ordering them. I thought we had ordered them in the winter, but I. I guess we had said that we would order them in the spring, so, um, we're working on ordering them currently.
A lot of snow.
Can we say which roads will be paved this year?
Uh, currently, now, a lot of this will depend on, you know, what we get back for bids. But, uh, Kenny Woods Road and Long Cove Road are the two biggest roads. Uh, and then there are some other small ones like Second Street, Third Street, um. Potentially, uh, Patton Point, which is lay out by South Thomaston.
I always forget that's even in St. George.
Yeah. And then there's a couple smaller ones off of Kenny Woods Road. So again, the ten year road plan, um, requires three miles of paving a year. The last three years, uh, Rick has done three quarters to one point two or none at all. Uh, and so we are a bit behind. And so I'm, uh, you know, gonna, my plan is to carry forward some funds that we. Uh, didn't use this year, uh, combined with next year's. Uh, already reduced budget for that line, uh, but to try to get us closer to back on track. So, you know, doing somewhere around like, uh, four point five miles. So.
Wow.
Uh, we're also working on, um, a, a GIS interface that will have the road. Condition, uh, the year it was paved, when it's scheduled to be paved, so that our residents could log online and be like, my road stinks. Uh, you know, like, was it being paved? Or like, you know, the culvert here is flooded, uh, leave a, you know, like a note and then we'll get it back in. And, um, so an interactive face to, uh, handle road.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah.
So you think they'll do that instead of popping into the office costs and like saying, I need to fix my road?
Yeah, yeah, certainly.
Once you've seen the GIS map stuff, you just wanna go and look at it and play with it. I've been fascinated by that. Um, so the committee reports, planning board.
The planning board has not met since the last select board meeting. They will meet tomorrow night. They are considering the subdivision that's on Walston and Turkey Cove, the seven lots right next to the transfer station. Um, and members of the comprehensive planning committee are gonna come discuss growth areas. So that's all tomorrow night.
Down here at seven. No board of appeals issues? The harbor committee ban, you wanna talk about that? We talked about.
Well, actually, we were all down there.
Yeah.
The review of pro, process. And, uh, there was a question about when it was going to be paved is the, the number one thing. Uh, that was of, of concern. Uh, the other was to review where we were at the end of the ramp, uh, in terms of what was going to happen there.
Pavement, um, is scheduled for probably the second week of May.
Yeah.
Around May tenth.
It was a matter of when the state actually starts their mills thing, because then, uh, then that'll be when the proper car mills are going. Um, there was, uh, kind of a review of where we were with lighting down there and, uh, we had a hum that was of concern. Um, and, uh, the other concern was raised about where we are with the electrical panel. And that's, uh, essentially back, uh, right there where you're beginning the green space. And the question is whether a Jersey barrier might be put in place there, that sort of thing. Um, so really, there's just a little, a lot of small, little things to review of what was there.
One other thing, which was signs. So the, um, we don't have the map up anymore, but, um. What's being considered by the harbor committee is as you come into the landing, there would be a kiosk. With, um, stuff on both sides, so with like glass or whatever, that you, we could have information about the town and. Where to get ice cream and what's happening and whatnot, um, or permit and user fees. And then they would like to have a big sign on the face of the landing. That you would, as you're approaching from the water, that said, welcome to Fort Clyde. So, um. So.
But it would take a.
That, the kiosk, it looked to me, because I looked at the, um, the ordinance.
Okay.
And it looked to me like the kiosk meant the ordinance.
Great.
Then I looked at state law about approach signs. When you're approaching a town, you know, like, welcome to Kennebunk or whatever. You can have a big sign then. So I'm, there's an argument to be made that welcome to Fort Clyde.
Very last point of town.
No, but from the water you're coming.
Oh, I see.
Welcome to Fort Clyde, you're riding.
Do you think that ordinance applies coming to, from the water?
Yes, I do. Uh, uh, why wouldn't it?
What?
But what, this is what we have to find out. So.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
These are, um.
I have a separate question. The parking spaces that go along with the tiered approach for fees. How are those going to be protected or maintained or how does that work?
They're gonna have signs.
Well, I think, would it be helpful to show the layout of the park?
Sure, sure.
Great, then give me one second.
So, um. Ryan Klein projected maybe ten.
Okay.
Fishermen or users would want parking spots.
Okay.
That they would get when they pay their fee as a user.
Okay.
They get a designated parking spot. We don't really know how many people it's gonna be, but that's what they thought. Um, and they're, they were gonna have some kind of designation and then all the rest is first come, first served, but no overnight.
So this is looking at the, um, parking lot. So the upper left corner here is the green space that we reviewed earlier. Um, these spots in the middle of the lot are all day parking, that's a tenant spot. Um, these ones designated by orange are the commercial parking, so these are the ones that come with a fee.
Okay, yep.
Um, we may actually sw, sw, uh, swap those.
I, yeah, I was gonna say, those are most desirable just to observe.
Right, exactly. That, that, that's the thought behind that.
Yeah.
And so assuming that ten spots would be enough or be enough for our commercial.
Yeah, I could run those along one side or the other, yeah.
I just, we didn't wanna put a plan in place that did not provide enough commercial spots.
Oh, okay.
So.
And then I think where it says number two, that's where the handicap spots are?
Uh, these blue spots, those are handicap parking.
Oh.
This also says number two, um, this heavy commercial side on the left, that's, uh, the Reliance, the island transporter. They are, are only heavy commercial, you know, they're, they're paying eight thousand dollars a year, so, um. Yeah. And then, yeah, four hour parking along the boat ramp. And so, um. We don't really wanna hang up seventy-five signs down there. Um, we've talked about, you know, using some color coded paint and stencils on the actual spots. And maybe having, you know, one sign in an area.
Actually, that's a neat idea, like four hours on the actual spot.
Exactly.
You can't miss that.
Right.
You could ignore it, but you can't miss it.
You know, and having the commercial ones in red, you know, something that's, you know, shows that it's permitted and.
Right. Yeah, and then also if the kiosk was at the driveway as you're coming in at the top of the screen. Then if people are just walking by, not even parking down there. Um, they would see things on the kiosk.
Kiosk up here, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, somewhere, um, yeah. So, um, all right, so that's the harbor committee report. Thank you. We've heard from the budget committee.
Did that answer all your questions about maintaining and all that? I'll get her.
Um, Tammy, the cemetery committee.
Um, they meet on May first here at the town office at four thirty.
Emergency Services Committee.
They meet tomorrow.
Yeah, they're meeting tomorrow. Um, the TIF committee meeting is Monday at three o'clock in this room.
Next Monday.
Yes, and you can zoom in if you want. Um, the comprehensive plan committee, you should have all received on Friday, the draft comp plan. Um, and also a link to the GIS maps, so that you can look at the proposed growth areas. And Monday, are we gonna do it down here or upstairs? We'll let you know where it's gonna be, um, the workshop on Monday. Zoom down here. Yeah, the only thing I, I, I wanna make sure that, um.
Amazing.
Yeah, it's, it's.
The screen is good. Yeah, there's, there's a lot of, well, the map stuff on the screen that we have good visibility for that, but.
I think it's almost easier down here than upstairs. You end up so far away from it upstairs, but.
It is bigger though. But anyway, we'll let you know if it's not down here. Um, the Conservation Commission.
They met.
Okay.
They met.
Shellfish Committee.
Um, the Shellfish Committee met on Tuesday, April fifteenth in Warren. Jeff Schroder, Jeff Schroder, the Shellfish Warden, attended recertification training, so he's all recertified. And they've done away with his Shellfish Warden name. He's now called the Municipal Shellfish Conservation Ward.
I know.
He won't be heard though, we still call him the.
And he's currently working on three court cases involving clamming violations. Um, the, um, committee that does the test DNA testing. Gave us a report from, it went from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-four for the five towns. And the highest month, um, for bacteria and all those other awful contaminants was in July. And they will continue, they've got some cases where they're doing testing and pushing, looking for. Where the source is and trying to stop that. And they're gonna be coming back to Ripley Creek. Now that it's started to warm up and they're gonna do some more testing on the other side.
So who's, is that Jeff that's doing it or is this David Taylor or something?
David Taylor will come do that. He said he'll be back, but he'll probably get different results now it's warmed up quite a bit.
He had some concerns about, uh, the river as well, right? I believe he's doing some testing at Fort Point Trail.
Yes.
What was his concern there?
Jeff mentioned that too.
Dog waste.
Dog waste.
He said that the, the, the river levels are, um, out of control essentially, and he thinks a lot of it is dogs, so.
Wow.
Yeah, he's explained that a lot to me about that. And he did also mention the leak that had been going down.
Oh, that fuel leak.
The fuel leak at Watts Cove and the, um, DEP is dealing with that.
Yep.
And so they're working on that. License applications, the clamming licenses were due April first and they will start issuing licenses on June second. After a minimum of ten days of appetizing. And that was all for me.
So tell us if the solid waste committee.
They met on April sixteenth here at the town office at seven thirty AM.
Oh, good.
You're a sport, Tammy.
It's fine, get you up and get you going. And, and, and has somebody come into the office, Brandon, because they need to take Anne Marie Merrill off their list of members of the committee. Cause she's no longer with us, who passed away.
I mean.
And then several members need to be reappointed and they've changed the person who is now the chair and they have a new secretary.
So if you bring the nominations and information to us, then, well, we, we can.
You can nominate them tonight.
Yeah, if you know their names, you could do it right now.
Ray Emerson.
Okay.
Who was the chair and he needs to be renominated. Beverly Emerson, who was now the new chair. Jane Bracy needs to be renominated. Um. Yolann Lehman.
Lemon.
Lemon. He's an alternate and he needs to be renominated. And the new member, uh, Dorna Cashy, she needs to be renominated or nominated. I'm not sure if she was ever nominated.
I don't think she was. I don't think she was.
She needs to be nominated and she's the secretary of the.
So you're nominating those people. I'll second that. I think it's Cas. So you're nominating those people. I'll second that. I think it's Caske.
I think it's C.A.S.A.I.E.
All in favor? That's five, okay. Well, thank you. I'm glad they're, uh, back to work.
And they're, and they're looking for new members and they're willing to discuss the meeting time. If they do get new members, they're willing to meet in the afternoon or later in the day.
So, um, you can let Bill Batty know to post that they're looking for new members?
I think maybe they were gonna be talking to Bill about some things. Because they wanna advertise for the upcoming roadside cleanup day, which is on May third. Eight AM to noon, and there'll be more information on the website, posters and signs will go up. They are still doing the full compost recycling. And, um, Dorna Caske is the one that goes up and picks up all the stuff and takes it to the transfer station. Um, they had a discussion about the dump fees for residents and changing the transfer station hours. And the committee discussed it and voted and approved any changes that would be made. They were in agreement with everything. They wanted to do four ten-hour days at the transfer station. And they were thinking Wednesday through Saturday. But they were thinking that before they do any changes, they'd like to get some feedback from the public. So Tara did mention that they could put some sort of a survey on the website. So they would like to do that before any final changes are made.
They should probably have a sign up at the transfer station. You know, letting people know that if they wanna fill out a survey about this, go on the website.
And they did mention that, um, a member could be over there a couple of weekends on a Saturday and talk to people about what they think about changing hours and.
Did they make a recommendation around fees for the select board to consider or no?
Yes, they did. They, um, the fees for residents would be canceled. There would be no dump fees for residents where residents are already paying taxes. So they don't think that residents in the town should be charged additional fees to take stuff to the dump.
You mean like a mattress or something?
The idea was that this was non-commercial. So if you were a resident running a business, those, those fees would still apply.
Even tires and stuff like that?
And the, the staff was in favor of this too? So are you making a motion that we?
I would like to make a motion.
I would suggest why you have Suzie here. Do you all, do you remember if we budget revenue for the transfer station? We don't always budget all of our revenue.
It's all gobbled into one line. And then, and then it, when we have it actually come in, it's, it breaks all out into about fifteen lines. But we just, yeah, we budgeted as one revenue line.
Did they have any sort of, did Ben or Tara have any sort of estimate on, um,
I think Tara ran into her office and got some figures and she came with, up with a little over thirteen thousand maybe.
That we'd be walking away from if we do this.
But that was the discussion. We'd be losing the revenue should this, you know.
This year they're above their projected revenue at this moment.
It's not a big hardship to pay ten bucks for.
I would be careful to speak on that. I don't know that that's always true.
Yeah, right. I'm just saying.
It might mean there were less tires on the side of the.
I thought of that too. If you know that you can get rid of it for free.
That's a good point.
I don't know that it's worth thirteen thousand dollars, but.
Yeah, that's the hard part.
Do we have enough information to really go on this at this point? I mean, that's.
I mean, we have the, we have the ballpark figure that I trust Tara, you know, stays with these well on top of that. And so I think really it comes down to this board's sort of philosophy on the service that you're providing, or not.
Well, but we just had a big discussion and decided to charge local fishermen to use the Port Clyde landing.
That was largely due to feedback from other wharfs, though, that you would be, uh, you know, undercutting their service. And, um, there is no competition in the dump besides.
Tammy, where started this discussion?
I think just the, um, transfer station staff watching residents come in. And all of a sudden it dawned on them, here I am, they are coming, they're paying taxes, they're paying, you know, in town. Now they come in and a lot of people have complained, why do I have to pay this fee? I'm already paying up.
But there's, there's hefty disposal charges for the town. I mean, I would be against doing away with the boss. I mean, people need to go to the landfill to where they take the demo waste, I don't know where they're taking it right now, and see what happens and see what we pay. Because I'd be afraid of taking away that revenue, even if it's only thirteen thousand dollars.
I mean, they, people aren't questioning whether or not there's an expense with it. They're saying that they're already paying for it. And so if you bring a refrigerator, you're paying for it twice. Their tax dollars pay for the, the transport fees. And then their tax, then they have to pay cash separately for the refrigerator that they already have paid taxes towards transporting.
Yeah, but I don't consider our revenue stream and, um, the taxes that we pay to cover services like that. I don't think it's designed to cover, um, white goods disposal. I mean, it covers our municipal solid waste, but other charges, yeah.
So you feel like that's a separate category?
Yeah, it's definitely a separate category. Yeah, and I, I mean, I would be against it. I don't, I don't think our taxes are designed to cover that right now. If you came back to me and said, well, we've adjusted the taxes upward, thinking that there's X amount in disposal cost. I might think about it, but not, no.
Our revenue from the transfer station pretty conservatively, like we do all of our revenue, and this year they are.
It was a lot higher.
Tracking, uh, well, above it. I, I would actually say that we are set up for it because of the way that we budget our revenue.
So it's the commercial fees that are way over, not the Joe Blow brings an old couch like.
But we're still not hitting our tipping, tipping fees, you know, we're, our expenses are still.
Well, that's never gonna happen for a landfill, for your landfill tipping fees. You're never going to cover them. Yeah, even like towns that make you use certain bags and they weigh them. It never covers the, the actual tipping fees. It's too much. And we pay too much, I mean, we pay tons in transportation costs. That's where our big fees are.
Tipping and transport. And we keep jacking them up and it, I think we've got transport just about right at this point, but tipping, we're still.
I see the public sentiment to it, right? Tax dollars paid for the facility to be built, they pay for it to operate every year. And then you have to pay a third time if you want to get rid of something as routine as a microwave or a, uh, you know, you cleaned out your spare bedroom or, um, you know, you, you, you replaced, you changed your own tires and now you need to get rid of the tires. And instead of just throwing them, burning them in your backyard, throwing them into the quarry, you do the right thing and then you gotta pay for it, so.
Well, I just think that's part of life and that's part of being an adult. And I understand that it can be a hardship. It sometimes it amounts to a flat tax. I know what you're saying. But I don't think our solid waste system in terms of finance is set up to not have people pay for disposal of goods other than municipal solid waste.
Again, it's, it's only the people that are handling it themselves, right? So if you are able to afford to hire somebody to clean out your barn for you and bring it to the dump, that person is still paying a fee.
Yeah, but this, we're talking most of us dumping our old refrigerator or whatever. Tammy, Ben, Steve, any other?
I think they're hoping too, there's gonna cut down like Suzie said, I think, dumping the old couch up in the town forest.
Oh, people dumping stuff wherever they can. Yeah, on my road, there's, uh, um, you know, there's six, six tires and a chair. And they put up signs that say free or they just?
No, 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 they're down in the.
Because you would pay per tire.
And the, and the chair would have cost something.
They're not even trying to put them into planters or anything. It's just trash on the side of the road.
So do people feel ready to vote on this? Is there any other discussion? Tammy, are you gonna make a motion?
I make a motion that we, um, take away the solid waste fees for residents in the town of St. George.
Non-commercial.
Non-commercial resident.
For every single category, for every single category of waste?
That was what they fought for, again, that was of, of, non-commercial resident.
And the only category there is now is when you go to the end and throw something in there. Is that it?
There's demo, which you're referring to. If you were to drop a fridge down back, there would be a fee for that. There are tires of the.
That, oh, there's, but I'm, that's one category in my mind, even if there are different fees for each thing. It's one place where all that stuff goes.
The wood has to go one place.
But I'm not taking wood, so I don't think of that, okay. Um, is there a second?
They also mentioned that we have, as far as commercial fees for people to come to dump, they're a lot lower than other towns. And I think they're considering looking at those fees to see if they need to be adjusted to help offset some of this.
For the commercial fees. Should go up and the residents should go down. Well, I remember that got adjusted a couple of years ago. All right, all in favor of the motion? Or opposed? All right. So what else do we have here? Parks and Rec?
Let's see, Parks and Rec met last week at, uh, it was posted at six o'clock. They, uh, at six-thirty, they actually met at six. I arrived at six-thirty to find the meeting was well underway. But in the meantime, uh, I'm able to find out that they were reviewing, that they were with the Muscle Ridge Hoops, program and they actually made five thousand four hundred and ninety-some dollars.
That's great.
As a result, um, let me see if I can give you the exact figure here. Five thousand four hundred and seventy-six dollars and thirty-four cents.
Keep in mind, that is a boosters group, not, uh, revenue for the town department.
It goes to the school, right?
The, the, the boosters are a group that supports the department, so they raise money.
I got friends out there. It's part of their way of working out the finances that, that we have, so it's a positive in that regard.
Boosters group in the committee opt to me at the same time, doesn't get a little word.
There were discussions about the scoreboard that I don't know anything about at this point. They, there's been some talk about a field day and no date has been set, okay? The, uh, there was, as I said, uh, they wanted an open canoe rack. They thought that was a good idea. And the question about bringing your own panels was one, one of the discussions there, but nothing was finally settled in that regard. But it really is in their, in their bailiwick at this point, the proceeds forward. And, uh, they were very much in support of the, uh, youth and scouting, uh, donation to the town and so forth, as we know from the presentations. The, uh, and really, uh, there was some, uh, question about the, uh, the signage for the canoes and so forth that was up there. And, uh, really not much else, uh, it was over fairly quickly and the next meeting's May five at six PM.
All right, is there any other news from the Resilience Committee? Well, you guys had, um, RFP visitors, right?
Yeah, we had eight, well, I did.
That last time.
Pretty excited about that.
I'm getting tired.
On April twenty-sixth is when the proposals are due here at the town office.
Okay, and did you have any sense of how many you might get?
We have, yeah, we've had some questions.
Has the Scholarship Committee done anything? What are we supposed to do to make something happen?
I don't know. I'll have to call somebody.
Okay, Brandon says, all right, good.
The scholarship applications are not due yet, so you have nothing to review. So in the meantime, I'm working with Irene, once she, she gets through, uh, this piece around the bond, to give a report of what's available for each, uh, fund to be paid out. And so once, you know, I'll give that to the group, you'll review the applications and then, uh, make decisions that way, so.
And one other thing, this ties into both the Scholarship Committee and the Budget Committee. At the Budget Committee meeting today, they ta, they're going to review the terms of the trusts that we, um, manage them exactly, we, we. We steward and make sure that we're aware of those. And, uh, Wendy, I volunteered you to answer questions of Suzie and other Budget Committee people have any, since you're familiar with trust.
Well, I know a tiny bit about trust.
More than most of us.
All right, but I'm gonna charge you a fee for them.
The last thing I wanted to, um, uh, well, two things. We need to sign our names on these, um, Jason Ludwig's appointments. And the Memorial Day Parade. Brandon says he's on, is from the town side coordinating with the, um, legionnaires. And Ben is hoping to find a vehicle to tow those of us who are.
Transport.
Select board members, all right, since mine isn't up to.
I can't guarantee anything, but I.
Is it gonna be an elegant? Find something at the transportation museum that has an antique car.
There's some nice cars that I would.
That would be fun.
Yeah, that would be fun.
Or you can stand in the back of the dump truck.
Lawn chairs in the dump truck and ways. That's our backup plan, okay, Ben? Any other items on the agenda for tonight? No, otherwise, we will see you on Monday at six o'clock. And then our next regular meeting is. Well, that's not a meeting though, that's a workshop. So our next regular meeting is May fifth at six.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, Suzie. Safe travels.
All in favor?
Buying that cake over there.
Take it home with you if you wanna take a piece home with you. It's blueberry ricotta. It's got maple syrup and cardamom. So if you don't like any of those.
I do have to eat dinner when I get home, but sure, maybe I'll take a.